I'm going to call the meeting to order. Welcome all business. We're going to get Mr. Duck to do the prayer and pledge allegiance.
Thank you, Mr. Garrett. We will go to the Lord in prayer, please. Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight. We thank you for life. We thank you, Lord, for this beautiful day that you provided. You awakened us too. Truly, it's a blessing to be alive. And we just pray that you'll guide tonight the council and each one that will be participating and give guidance and leadership. And, Lord, just bless this community, bless its people. And I pray that you'll bless each council member and their family and the staff and also all the employees that work for the town of Appomattox. Pray now your guidance and we give you the glory and the praise for your grace. In Jesus' name, amen. Let's stand for the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated.
I hope you all looked over the agenda, approval of the agenda. Anybody have any problems with the agenda? Since the mayor's not here, we'll come back to him. He's going to be a few minutes late, but anyway. Mayor's comments, adoption of the consent agenda. Have you all reviewed the consent agenda to where you all can adopt it from March the 10th, 2025?
Ma'am, I'll make a motion that we approve it.
I'll second it.
Have a motion on the floor and second. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? I would support aye. Scheduled public appearance. Sheriff, Mr. Richardson, have the floor to you. Thank you.
Thank you all for having me. Thank you, Mr. Garrett. I just came before you all to talk about our budget. I don't know if I missed the budget session or not, but I just figured I'd bring it in front of you. I'm not asking from the financial standpoint, I'm just asking for level funding for what I asked for last year. We greatly appreciated the influx of money for the training budget and also covering the load and the other financial things that already been paid for. So I do appreciate those things. The other thing I brought before you is I know we kind of talked about it last year a little bit and we haven't come to a consensus as on the vehicle. So I figured I'd come at least each year to ask for it until we get to a common agreement on what year is proper for this. Is the vehicle? Each of you provided a manila folder that shows you how much the vehicle will cost and also how much an install will cost for that vehicle. I can tell you right now, we're on our last leg. We have one vehicle go down right now, then we'll be switching cars back and forth because we do not have any extra spares right now. Now, that comes with also saying that we have a brand new vehicle that's been in a shop for six months. So I think we finally just got that fixed. We unfortunately had a dealer that we were no longer used because they were not fixing the problem.
Wow.
So we remedied that and have since got it fixed from a different dealer and we just got it back and hopefully get it back on the street. So even with getting that one back, there's no extra vehicles. So if there is money to spare this year, an extra vehicle would greatly be appreciated.
I guess I'll speak for the rest of the council. We all going, when we get into budget, we're going to talk about that and try to come up with a conclusion of what we do with that to let you know so you know.
I appreciate that. Any other questions?
Yes, if you don't mind, let me ask a question so I'm clear on the amount, pardon me, that you're requesting. So it is the 42308 for the Durango and then on top of that, obviously, the Upfit.
That's right. And then you'll see a Rodeo 2000, that's the labor.
Labor for the installation. Okay, so 57515. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, now that's if it doesn't go up before now and then, but we ought to be able to cover our difference this year.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Concerns?
Have you given a copy of the updated MOU draft?
I have not.
Okay. That was what Kim and I had worked on last year.
Okay.
But it's been kind of two, you took office January last year. So it's been at least since then in the works. I think the only point that we still have to decide is do we want to define a frequency for a car? So do we provide a car? Do we provide a car request? Or do we schedule every three years, we're budgeting a portion other than our CFP because it's what, almost $70,000, $60,000, $5,000? So we can split that and just define it so the sheriff knows when to expect a car. And that's been the only thing that the council really hasn't made an agreement on one way or the other.
I think we're going to move, have in-depth conversations soon as we get into budget.
And our budget maybe.
See my way out on Monday.
Yeah, Mr. Kim and I had a great meeting the other day and I explained that we kind of had a partial MOU. It was kind of temporary until July last year. So whenever we can get that done, it'd be great. We appreciate it.
Well, in your packets there, Cindy has handed out the existing MOU in his hands. And section 10, pardon me, this agreement shall remain in place in perpetuity unless either party provides a written notice to the other that it wishes to terminate the agreement. A minimum of 12 months notice shall be given prior to termination of the agreement. So as far as the MOU is concerned, we have one. My recommendation would be that we would treat the sheriff's department and the requirements and needs that they have, just like we would a department of ours. And so if he needs a car this year and you guys decide to give him one, then we do that as part of the budget process and we can do it again next year. If you decide that's what you want to do, and of course, obviously, the money's available, then you could give him a car every year. But just like, you know, we're not in the realm of capital improvements, we're really talking about capital expenditures. So just like I can't tell David in Public Works, in three years, I know that in three years, I'm going to buy you a new F-250.
Right. But we have used our capital, we have used, we've called it a CIP and I agree with you, it's a capital expense plan, but I don't necessarily think it has to be a strict or rigid capital improvement plan for like buying property or replacing sewer pipe, but we have used it for purchasing that exact scenario, like in that 250. We've planned for it multiple years in advance and it's been on our wish list.
So, yeah, so I've looked at our three years past budgets. I'm aware of what you're talking about there. What we'll be doing moving forward with the budget process is the CIP will include, if there was a piece of equipment, a fire truck would be something that we go on a CIP.
Sure.
You know, half a million, $750,000. There are best practices on thresholds, on money, on what we go on the CIP and what would be a capital expenditure for a department. I think, I'm guessing right now, I can't remember off the top of my head, I think it's about $120,000 is a normal number. But we really want our CIP to be a CIP and we want our capital expenditures to be departmental. And in this particular instance, I would just look at the sheriff's department as an extension of this town and one of our departments that we need to fund every year. So, you know, we can put it on paper, right? I just, none of us knows where we're going to be in three years, right? So we can say, we can say right now, hey, just like you have your 401Ks, excuse me, 401Ks, CDs set up for specific expenditures, you can, council can decide to set up a CD and start allocating funds to that for a car in three years. But to have any kind of contractual agreement to that, I just don't.
Right, and none of this, you're hitting the nail on the head. Like it's, this has been my frustration, I think, since being on council is, we turn a lot of things into extended discussion and back and forth and political and really it's giving our sheriff's office a car. So I'm totally comfortable with doing it the way that you're describing. That's the way to do it. That's the professional way to do it. We don't need to have a, you know, $60,000 expense on our CIP. That needs to be for the million dollar things. But that means for us as a council, unless we truly can't afford it, we need to give the sheriff a car when he asks for one. And that has to be the expectation. If we can't afford it and we're going to have to, you know, fire somebody or raise taxes to give him a car and he actually has three cars hanging out and they're all good or whatever, that's a different situation. But if he comes in good faith and says, hey, y'all paid the two deputies, we're having to start to swap cars, then we need to cough up $60,000 bucks and give him a car. So we need to weigh, are we going to do that or do we need to put it in writing so that everybody at least knows where we all stand? Because if we're not going to give him a car, he needs to know that.
We just give you, I was, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, no.
I just will let you know that we, so the county gives us three vehicles a year. So that's where we're at with that.
Every, every single year?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
So, I mean, so like just for clerical application, capital is basically an asset. When we give a car, we don't own that car, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just making sure. So that, so it would really classify as, it would classify as an expenditure and not an asset?
Right.
Okay. So, yeah, so that kind of clarifies that it would definitely need to be.
I mean, for audit purposes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I would, I would move that when we get into budget thing, we need to seriously discuss this and move forward with what, like Nathan says, whether we're going to do it or not, whatever, if he needs it. Robbie knows if he needs something, he can come to, we're going.
Absolutely, absolutely.
But I think we can probably have a whole lot more discussion when we start our budget and so we can.
Let you know.
Let Robbie know.
Look at the numbers and crunch those numbers appropriately. How many vehicles, how many vehicles, I started to say cop cars, vehicles, do you have right now?
Approximately 26 is what I'm going to say because that's how many officers and deputies we have.
26.
So we don't have any left over, that's what it should be. Now, that doesn't include our tactical van and our armored truck, but hopefully we're going to be getting, selling this armored truck pretty soon because it's useless right now.
And you have 26 deputies and then you just said like you had one, the new one, and this other one who's, that's getting real rickety, they out of service. So that makes it.
We have an even amount of cars right now for people.
Even.
But they don't have time to rack one or to one break down.
Yeah, and it happens.
Unfortunately, more than we'd like.
And then it's the repairs. Because I know they brought the cars into, when I was working at Webb's, and they'd be like, we had to wait, you know, four or five months for a part from a domestically made car. And it, I understand the aggravation there. That is.
2020 unfortunately gave a lot of people crutches to use, to, we're still using right now to say the COVID is unfortunately what we're waiting on. So there are issues that we do have still.
Do you have a, like a pathway to not having to swap cars and put musical chairs right now or?
So we just recently used some asset forfeiture money to purchase one to help. So we're trying to get that one up in the fleet. So whenever that is available, then we hope to remedy some of that. And then we're just trying to piecemeal until July and we get three new ones.
And then you'll just get rid of the other ones.
We won't get rid of, no, we're going to use them as spares.
Okay.
But unfortunately, as you all were talking earlier, from either breaking down or, you know, deer crash or whatever it may be, it's like they come in droves. So if one happens, you'll look at two more unfortunately. And then insurance only pays you pennies on the dime for the vehicles. You don't get enough to make up for a new one.
And I see this one's, it says new 2023, brand new, I guess. You didn't want to go hot, to take, get a 2024 much, do you?
So that was the price I get in January.
Okay.
When we were looking at pricing out the bound one with asset forfeiture. And that's the ones on the lot right now. So what you'll see is that's from Kentucky. So we usually here lately have not bought off from the state of Virginia because when I call the state of Virginia, I've got to buy a VIN number, that vehicle's not ready. So when they, I call to get it, they've got to build it and it's going to be six to eight months before I can get it. Or I can get it for a couple hundred more dollars on the lot. It might be a year old but brand new.
Yes.
I need them yesterday, so it's, I don't have the time to wait six to eight months to get the vehicle in.
I understand.
And unfortunately, new age vehicles, they all seem to have their own issues, whatever brand it may be, they get their own problems.
If council is amenable, I would suggest that you make, maybe take action to instruct me to add a line item to the budget for the car for the sheriff's department. That does not mean that you have decided that you're going to buy it. It means it'll be part of the budget for you to consider.
I'll definitely motion for, for the line item for the car for the sheriff's department.
Do you need a vote for that?
I would ask for action just to.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion made and properly seconded to adding a line item to the budget for the purpose of funding a police vehicle for the Amex County Sheriff's Department. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? As heaven the motion carries.
Sir, I appreciate it. And I didn't, as I thought about on the way here, it's our quarterly meeting, who believe we're in March already, but I didn't bring my stats with me. So I'll come back to the next month's meeting to bring you all the stats for the quarter. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. We'll be diving deeper into the budget by next month.
So I'm going to skip back to mayor comments. I'm sorry for my tardiness. Went down a rabbit hole and got stuck. So I'll try to stay focused on where we're headed on these things. This time, any citizen public comment? Time allows our citizens the opportunity to address the town council with issues of importance to the citizens. No individual citizen shall be permitted to address the town council for more than three minutes. Is anyone here to speak?
I can't hear you.
Is anyone here to speak to the council? Are you here to observe?
I wouldn't want to, but with all the new construction.
Will you come to the podium?
Yeah, please come to the podium. We need to state your name.
With all the new construction going on, Tom will.
Ma'am, state your name and your address and then you can begin to speak.
Connie Amel, 170 Plant Drive. My thing is, question would be, how much with all the new building going on, the new construction, is that going to make any difference in the taxes to help fund like his cruiser that needed? Will that bring in enough revenue to help with?
With any budget cycle we go through, we determine what we anticipate for the budget based on the property, real estate and real property taxes that we anticipate accumulating during the year for those purposes. We get into the budget cycle, we got to get it approved and ready to go for July 1st on that. So what our staff will bring to us on what they anticipate, we will work from that point.
I was kind of hoping it would help you.
We would hope so. Anything like what Robbie's requesting would probably come out of general fund, which usually does not increase, though the food taxes do come into that, so that would help more than anything. The real property, the real estate taxes and the personal property taxes also accumulate into that fund and we'll see what we anticipate obtaining for the fiscal year 2026 and we'll see what we can do. It's a total, it's a very big item and a very big, well, it's a single item in a very big picture that we've got to put together there. So we've got our work cut out for us for the next four months to get there.
We've got to move people into these empty houses too then.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any unfinished business to come forward to council? Any new business to come forward to council? All right, standing committee reports. Physical development?
We have none at this time.
Finance and planning?
Nothing.
The Centennial Commission?
So we have had a series of meetings over the last couple of months. We talked about this at the last meeting, gave you guys a heads up that we had looked at how they did it in 2000 for the 75th and we don't necessarily think we want to fund it the same way in that they sent out a basically mass mailer to the who's who of Appomattox and asked for donations, like, you know, literally a form where you check a box and say, I want to get $25 or what have you. We are kind of doing it, hoping to do it in a two-part format where the town itself as, you know, the hosting government or whatever you want to call it, that we pay for the event festivities, kind of the core part of the memorabilia and things, and then we do a private fundraising campaign if it comes together for us to raise outside money for some sort of bell or long-term heritage piece, like whether it is a brass bell or something else. So that would be private donations. I don't think any of us are comfortable with voting for tens of thousands of dollars of taxpayer money to go towards a monument of sorts, but I think we can raise the outside money to do it, so we'll give it our best shot. In terms of events, we're planning on doing a event close to the actual day of the 100 anniversary, so that's, there's still a date. We're waiting to confirm it, so we don't want to announce it yet, but in early June. And then a event that will take place in and around Main Street during Railroad Festival. So, you know, not something separate, but that will have booths or exhibits and parts of the train depot open specifically focused on town history and some multimedia stuff that we're recording too. So in our budget now, using some of the funds from the town picnic that we used to have that we just haven't done since 2020, we have about $8,000 plus a CD that the 75th committee put in and just left, so that's another 900 bucks. So we're hoping to, across those events and the AV, we put together a budget that's right at $20,000. So with the roughly 9,000, and I'd have to fact check whatever that dollar amount is, the committee is requesting the remainder from just general fund of the town. So it would be, it's somewhere between 11 and $12,000, whatever the to the dollar amount is. So that's where we're at. If there's any thoughts on it, you know, this is just us kind of working as a committee in isolation from the whole body of the council. So if there's any major opposition to it, we can scratch our heads and brainstorm again. But to put on at least a baseline respectable event where we're, you know, trying to get AV or food of some sort, it just costs money. So that's, there is the ask. It's the, you know, somewhere between 11 and $12,000. Mike, you had said something earlier about how we would need to actually formally construct the request, whether we could just be fine off of a consensus tonight or if we'd want to vote on it or consider it.
Yeah, I mean, that would be up to council. I mean, obviously, council has the authority to take action this evening if they choose to. Or they can defer or they can, you know, I mean, you guys can handle it however you see fit. But you could take action tonight.
We already have the tourism thing anyway. I mean, that, to me, that should fall into the current tourism budget we already have. We just need to put more money to it, the way I feel. It's already there.
And you can absolutely do that. You can do that tonight.
And I thought we had talked about increasing, or maybe I'm thinking wrong. I thought this was brought up before.
So it's been discussed a couple of times and increasing degrees of clarity, but, yeah, really, it's.
Yeah, I think we need to. I think we kind of need to plan on it because we got a timeline and we have a goal.
We've got enough numbers to do that. That 12,000 is what you think it's going to be on?
Yeah, we can, I think after tonight, we can, there's a good consensus that we can work with that. It would just, the scale would be how much merchandise or how many people, if any, were feeding or, you know, those are the kind of variables.
So then why don't we just write it up that you take what was left over from the town picnic, what's left in that CD and whatever else, whatever amount needs to come out to where it comes up to 20K and just be done with it.
Yeah, that's, yeah, it's 11, I mean, we could just say $12,000 and that way we're not doing math later. But so I can, if everybody's cool with it, I can make that as a motion now and we'll just vote on it and be done with it.
We just need to know what line we're going to put it in, whether it be tourism or what line was the, Kim's not here.
Well, we can, yeah, you can direct or we can, I can just come back. If you just, if you tell me to find the money, I can find the money.
I second your motion. Motion by Mr. Simpson, seconded by Mr. Garrett to arrive a total funding of $20,000 for the Appomattox Centennial Events. Any further discussion?
No, I'm just thankful that we can agree on this because I'm on the committee, have been since inception, and this is a very, very worthy cause for the, for the town. It's our 100th anniversary. It's a big deal.
You only turn 100 once.
Exactly.
Some towns didn't last that long. I mean, there was a town that dissolved on December 31st last year, so.
And I just appreciate your council support on this as we move forward with it.
Any further discussion? By roll call vote, Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Boyce?
Yes.
Mr. Cardwell?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Ms. Spiegel?
Yes.
A vote of six to nothing, motion carries. Town managers report. Mr. Campbell?
I don't really think I have much to do to report. I did, I was asked a question by a council member and I wanted to make sure that you all had the same information regarding Confederate pipe bursting. I was asked if it was possible, given that method of construction, to increase the size of the pipe for increased capacity, economic development purposes. It is.
To what size?
Currently, it's an eight inch, sanitary sewer line. I believe with the information that I have, I believe it actually can be blown out to a 12 inch. But I know it can be blown out to a 10 inch, which should be more than sufficient than anything we would have probably in any of our lifetimes in that area. And as far as, I'm sorry.
We're talking about the sewer?
Yes.
Line on Confederate bow bar?
Yes, the presentation you received from Cory and David.
Okay, just want to be sure.
The other thing I'd say is my apologies for the delayed budget, but it's for good reason. We got our audit finished. So we should be having a presentation from them, I guess, next month with their opinion. And that, so that pushes us back a little bit. Both were fine. I think you'll appreciate the budget process that we'll use this year. I think, I think it'll be good for everybody, very clear, transparent and easy to understand. And so, yeah, I think that's, I think that's all I've got for you. Cindy, you good?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If we decide to increase this line, how's that going to affect us in getting grants when we're using the emergency of the line to, agent's line to get, is that?
when we're using the emergency of the line to, Agent's line to get, is that?
Yeah, that's a very, very good question. So there are a lot of grants that, they're no-go on betterment, right? A betterment is what it sounds like. You're improving the situation from the existing condition. That being said, given the nature of the, of blowing out a pipe and how that is constructed, well, I would say this, if we were totally limited by grant opportunities, given the scope and size of the project, we would just put eight-inch back, right? Because that's what we had to do. With blowing out the pipe, I don't think that, I don't think that, I don't think there would be any difference in going to a 10-inch. It may even be, and I'm not, I'm not familiar enough, I've lined thousands of feet of pipe. I've not done a blowout myself. But it may be that it has to increase in size. Because I do know the nature of it is, is that it really crushes everything around it. And that's where it gets its structure from, right? So, all that to say, I feel like I've dealt enough with grants with FEMA and FHWA and a few other, and DEQ, that there's probably justification there for us to be able to try to increase the capacity of the pipe and still get grant money. Hopefully, we get grant money at all, right? That's, but, yeah, I will be keeping an eye on whether or not a betterment is a non-starter.
Yeah, because I knew that probably would affect it.
And the grants would take longer, right? That's, I mean.
Well, we'll be on their timeline.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's, that's, that's the drawback, right?
Yeah, but that's what we would want to use.
The blessing of the whole thing is, I haven't heard of a whole lot of blockages. So we've got to flow in line. So, I mean, if we start having recurrence blockages, we're going to have to speed up. But to my knowledge, we hadn't had a whole bunch of blockages in that line anyway.
And actually, we wouldn't know about this problem if you all have not had the foresight to do the project with taking the inventory and having all the lines camera. So, for right now, we're in good shape. And hopefully, it stays that way until we're ready to address, address the issue.
Tells us we're moving in the right direction anyway. I mean, that's what we try and do.
Being proactive.
CHA is actively, I mean, they're looking into the grant situation right now.
Okay, good. That's good.
What's the longevity of the method that we're?
Of blowing out?
Yeah.
I would imagine it's probably no different than lining.
Okay.
And if it's like lining, 50 years. I mean, again, one of those things will all be gone, probably, or at least some of us. Hope not.
Nathan takes some bite mentions.
Maybe, I forget, we have some very young members of council.
McKinley's probably younger, too, right?
I hope you two are still around.
I forget that sometimes, too.
That's all I know.
But, no, I would, I would imagine that it's the same as lining. So it'd be, it would be a long-term solution. Pardon me.
Council comment, Ms. Spiegel.
You're calling me first?
Yes, ma'am, I'm doing a little reverse here.
Okay, I don't have anything additional to add tonight.
Mr. Simpson?
Nothing tonight.
Mr. Garrett? Mr. Cardwell?
I think I really only had about three things just kind of like popped up on my mind as we've been kind of like discussing everything. Just from looking back over what we want to look at for the Leach Law and also for the Property Maintenance Code. And secondarily to that, the committee assignment, generic confusion and bureaucracy of it, is there a way we can just get staff kind of to look at like other municipalities close to us and figure out what they've actually done with theirs? Because I know that some have just completely gotten rid of it and just left it up to the workshops. And then some have kind of like expanded upon and actually have like a little like sheet of like, how do you go about this step-by-step? I think that would help us out just in clarification. So we can either be more efficient, or we can just get rid of something that may be superfluous just in general.
So the ask again would be, this is regarding the Leach Law?
Oh, no, 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 no.
I'm sorry.
Sorry, all good. Yeah, so it's the, well, so like, Leach Law and just the property maintenance thing, just to look back over. I think there is something tangible to it because I know the other.
Oh, the property management.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But this one is for the, of the committee assignments. So planning and development and the finance one. Because I think some of us here are kind of like generally confused and everything, what should we do with those, the assignments we've been given? Because I think we could easily, one, just get rid of them entirely, or we could develop processes to how to use them best, or to have the best practice.
Yeah, that's not an issue. As a matter of fact, I've already looked up our charter, and it's, it's, it does not really spell out what is supposed to happen for these things. It basically just says there's two standing committees. So, I can, at council's discretion, I'm happy to present, I can, I can, I can tell you what best practices are for both of those, or you could decide that they're not necessary. Either way, it needs to be amended. It needs to be amended so that it reflect, if you keep the committees, if you keep finance and the physical committee, their duties need to be on in the charter.
Outlined more precisely.
Yes, because it really, there's only one thing that I found with finance, and it does not. So that, that definitely needs some work.
So, McKinley, are you on the finance committee, too?
I'm on.
Plan, well, under oath.
Okay, all right.
So I'm, so I'm happy to.
When our retreat things, I guess.
I'm sorry.
When we have our retreat, we can discuss this, you know, how we want the stuff to follow up.
Yes.
Right. And then as far as property maintenance concerns, it's something that we've been digging deep into. Rob and I, Rosman, as usual, great asset. We, it's, it's a very complex issue, and so we are very limited in the things that we can and can't do. At least when it comes to retroactively. And of course, just like anything else, being a Dillon role state, everything we do has to be enumerated by the state legislature, so. But we can, we can certainly improve what we've got. You know, we've spoken, Rob and I have spoken about doing an overlay district downtown or maybe different spots, working on the comp plan, and there's things that could, that could come into play there. So, these are, these are things that are in progress.
Yeah, a lot of this is items that have come up that, oh, we can't do nothing about what they've already done. We need to set ourselves up so we can prevent other things from being done without proper consent of the council and citizenry.
I don't mean to sound, I guess, the way that I always do, but I've been coming to these meetings since 2016, and every year I've heard that. That we can't do anything about property maintenance because we've never had a property maintenance code that's enforceable. And I think my colleagues' frustration in that you're bringing it up is that we have to actually choose, and we need to decide, are we going to allow the types of things that we have allowed? And I think the composition of the community and type of service, at least my phone rings about this stuff. And it's embarrassing when you have something that's so blatantly obvious that, you know, is, is not, in any, in any reasonable person's understanding of what a property maintenance code should be, when you see something that is blatantly non-compliant, and then we're told we have no remedy, we can't blame Rob, and we can't blame our town manager. It's entirely on our, our action to adopt something that lets us actually enforce it. So, I would be excited to see us adopt a property maintenance code that actually gives our staff the power they need to do something.
Something will bite in it.
Yeah, because I have answered my phone enough times saying, are y'all going to do something about that?
Well, it's not just your phone. I walk in the post office, and I've got somebody over here, somebody, hey, can I talk to you? I want to know what you're going to do about blah, blah, blah. And, and I, yeah, and it just happened this week, two people. Walked down the street and they, and they approached you.
It's not fair for we, for us to expect certain business owners to have things nice, or residents even, and then other people don't have to. I mean, it's like.
But the problem you run into, just soon as you go to court over it, and Robbie knows what I'm probably going to say, the time you arrest somebody for doing something, in Robbie's case, criminally, and he wants to, I've been there, I've been on testifies, and they walk at the door when you go at the door.
And have nothing, no charges, no money.
Legal side of it, we've got to take that into consideration of what, and that's what we in the past have looked at, our legal advice we've been getting from our attorneys of how we approach some of the things that this, a big eyesore.
And I don't know how you motivate someone to get rid of chip paint, to fix a broken window, to, I don't, I don't know how you would motivate anyone.
With a, with a letter, a pink letter on their door?
Yeah, in a positive way, how could you nicely say, let's look at your building, you know? When I go downtown, or when I'm in this area, this is what we're, we're looking at. It's an eyesore, or, you know, and, and that, you know, you have to tell people, oh, they were grandfathered in, or this is the way it is, and we really can't do anything about it. That's, the town residents just don't want to hear that, you know, I just.
Yeah, I, I definitely understand where you're coming from. I agree with your sentiments 100%. I can tell you, coming from a locality that had, that has had ordinances in place, they've spent three years in court with one particular citizen, repeating, and have actually spent their own resources and time cleaning this person's yard.
Yeah.
This has happened three times. And, I mean, the only reason why this thing isn't at the Supreme Court is probably because this guy doesn't have the money. So, the only thing I would say is, is that while I agree with you, and we are pursuing everything that we can, we are leaning on legal counsel on what we're going, you know, what we're pursuing. And we have to make sure, I would advise that we make sure, that it, whatever we do, it is something that we can apply equally across the board. And that council, if, depending on how far council wants to go, council is prepared for a protracted, extremely expensive legal battle.
Yeah.
Millions of dollars.
So, I mean, basically, the, the issues around the property maintenance code is just two things. It's cost, and the other one is to make sure that we are unbiased at the exact same time.
Precisely.
But the cost is mainly the issue.
Well, I mean, it's being cognizant. I mean, if you want to take on a battle, you can do that, you know? That's, that's fine. But it's something to be aware of, you know? We're not, we're obviously not Chesterfield County or someplace like that, or, you know.
And I mean, that's what we've been told, and I've been on here for a long time, Timmy has too. And that's what we've been told time and time again, that it, we just, it's impossible. And we've been told that by our legal counsel to pursue any legal matter to ask, make somebody, not just ask them, to improve or change, I guess it's not improve with.
And I can get a different opinion.
Yeah, we all want to see that change, but what.
I mean, there's YouTube videos out there about certain places and saying, like, what is this? And it's embarrassing.
Yeah.
I don't know what it would take, other than that. I mean, that's embarrassing enough. I think it would be like.
I hope not.
We've been trending on Reddit before to the tune of 6 million views on an image.
It's just, it blows my mind that it's, it doesn't encourage them to do anything.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's really, it's really a difficult situation. I can't, I don't have any experience in other states, but I have plenty of experience in Virginia. And it's a difficult situation in this state, which to some people is a good thing. I mean, it's private property rights and personal property rights.
And freedom of speech, right?
Obviously, freedom of speech was a federal issue, so. But the flip side of it is, is that because of that, the, you know, the legislature has been very conservative in giving powers towards, to the localities and enforcement on some of these things. So, we'll, we'll continue to dig. I can, I'm more than happy to, if we've only ever spoke, spoken to this one legal counsel, I can speak to somebody else. And I can certainly reach out to maybe some different localities that I haven't seen sort of fail at this.
Yeah, and we're lucky, like, I mean, I guess Robbie could speak to this. We don't have a homeless population. We've got pretty decent teenagers running around. So we're not, like, they're not vandalizing these buildings or sleeping in them, or not that we know of.
Very fortunate.
You know what I'm saying? But is, is that what it takes? Is that what it takes?
No, because honestly, it, those, that's, that's not being fixed either.
Right.
Like, those issues are, there's nothing, people are trying and trying to figure out ways to take care of these things.
Right.
You know, Robbie could speak to this better than I could, but, you know, like vagrancy laws and things like, they just, it's, it's so difficult.
Right.
It's all so difficult to actually get something done.
Could we put a special prop, we can have special property tax districts, right, in Virginia?
Yeah, you can, you can, well, essentially, we're going back to overlay districts. So there's, there's, and use taxes.
Can we do it on unused structures?
That I'm not sure. I don't, I don't know.
If we could just ramp it up to 100% of the value of the building for a year, that'd be great. Whatever the max is allowed by law, I would propose that.
Yeah, I, I.
I see half of your Main Street is empty and owned by.
I don't know how that would be enforced.
I mean, this is, this is, again, not my recommendation, but something that I, that probably most of you are aware about, aware of, that has happened before, is localities have condemned property for economic development.
100%, let's do it.
I mean, I'm just, it's not my recommendation. I'm just telling you that it's happened, and it was upheld at the Supreme Court.
I mean, do we really like what's going on right now?
But, again, you, you know, that's, that's, especially here in this state, that's, you have, we have to be cognizant of what the fallout would be and what all that would look like. It's.
Anyways, if y'all have further concerns about the property maintenance code, please just utilize the forms that have been provided us, because it will get proper questions and proper answers. I appreciate the discussion, but let's move right along. Mr. Cardwell, you finished?
Oh, yeah, I'm done.
Mr. Boyce?
I have nothing.
Thank you, miss, sir. Ms. Allen?
Yes, the weather's been beautiful, and I've been going to the park. And 1,000 people are at the park, not 1,000, but the park is booming, it's a happening spot. And I had mentioned to David and Tori the other week, you know, some limbs down, and everything is cleaned up. And then I see the trucks picking up, everybody's trying to clean up their yards and, from the snowstorm. And I just think our staff's doing a great job. Keeping everything. There's tons of limbs everywhere. They're doing a great job, that's all.
I appreciate you saying that. I will definitely pass that along tomorrow morning at our staff meeting. They really have been working very hard on that. And, so, thank you.
The landscaping at the depot, I think we need to check on that. Some of it's lacking a wall because of the, it's underneath the shelter, I don't think it's.
Oh, okay.
On the Main Street side.
Okay.
You might get somebody to check it before we lose it all.
Also, there's the new playground coming in April. The groundbreaking starts in March.
At where?
I'm so excited, I can't wait. I just, I'm so excited.
The what?
Oh, the groundbreaking in April now, it was March. I did have it written down for March, but I'm excited, so.
Well, we're going to get a white tent and stuff, right?
I don't know, I hope we have cake or something.
At the Kitty Park? What, is it an expansion of the Kitty Park or what?
Cindy, Cindy's done a lot of work on that.
Okay.
And I think it would be absolutely wonderful for you all to do a ribbon cutting of some sort.
Absolutely.
I hope that that would be something that you would want to do. I think, I think it'd be great.
We did something like that when we expanded the Kitty Park, initially because your grandkids were on video going down the sliding board, they were much younger then. And we did do something like that when we initially improved the Kitty Park.
Yeah, it's a busy place. So, I'm happy, and I'm, I'm in my mom area, y'all, you know, I like to go to the park, so. That's all, I'm excited.
Well, we'll, we'll try to, Cindy and I will work together and try to set something up so that we can have a ribbon cutter, have a celebration, a small one.
Is there any other business coming forward with the IMAX Town Council at this time? Is there any other business coming forward with the IMAX Town Council at this time?
I'm going to motion adjourned.
Second.
Motion made, properly seconded for adjournment. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Ayes have the motions carried. We are adjourned.